Going to order the committee of the whole meeting of the Warren Public Library District today. It's Wednesday, April seventeen, twenty twenty-four, and it is six four one. Your role call, trustee Lizan.
Here.
Trustee Pika, press, trustee Warren.
President.
Trustee Stell, trustee Derosha is here, and also executive director. And our tag of this array. Not present. Why? Not present are trustee Schmidt and trustee. All right. Let's move on to. No. Let's go ahead and review our first draft of the budget. Take it away, Jason.
All right, where do we begin? Just as a personal note, you've got an extra page. Because on page seven, I noticed for those reviewing it today that the bottom numbers of the grand total were wrong. Retyping numbers from the spreadsheet into. So my apologies for that. So the highlighted blue at the bottom are the correct.
The highlighted in blue is in what? Might have not.
Yeah.
Sorry. All right.
All right. So in terms of the corporate fund. Our levy went up, but we levy. Well above the five percent, we're limited to the five percent by the detail that due to growth in town, our levy went up seven percent. So so that's hundred and forty-four thousand change higher than last year. It was great. It's clear, but it's twenty-five thousand for the tip, but we really got. Which is great, so that's why increase to upcoming year. Developer donation there is a little bit because. I kept the interest income at ten thousand, even though at the moment we are, I think. We were last year as well, but I don't know at what point interest rates will start to come down, so. That's all our income, so it's a nice bump from last year. Looking at the giant spreadsheet, it's overall just up seven percent or no, eight percent.
That's a nice number.
Indeed. So then overall for the corporate fund expenditures. And increase expenditures over current year by two thousand, two thirty-three. But I will point out while the income overall went up. Hundred and seventy-six thousand are expenditures only going up eighty-two thousand change, so we are. Spending our expenditures are going up ninety-three thousand eight hundred dollars less than our income. So. That is good because this year we had that deficit. So we still technically have that deficit for this year twenty-five. But it is ninety-three thousand dollars less. And if you technically last year as I was. This year as I was playing more with Sandy's spreadsheets. Basically, despite. A lot of people thought I was an expert in Excel. Turns out I'd never played with hidden rows and columns. So there was a nice little hidden column or row you had at the end that. Suggested. What it would look like without the debt repayment. So I left that in this year. So if you look at that, you'll see that if you take out the debt repayment under the corporate fund, we would actually be thirty-three thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Which is great, so. We still have the debt repayment.
We still have to pay it, yeah.
We do, we do. And it'll go through twenty twenty-nine. Obviously, the principal or the interest go down every year, our principal amount keeps going up. This year. With that, in December of twenty twenty-nine, so. Acknowledge that there's probably likelihood if we want to do another building project, model a different part of the building or. Say for some larger mechanical replacements or whatnot, so it's possible we will take out that again, but just knowing that come then. But I realized that we do have still do have to pay that.
Right.
So but it's a lot less than the current. So for the special reserve, we've got. No income since we were planning on spending any of that deficit money out of our corporate fund. And as far as expenditures go. It's less than what we had scheduled last year because we accounted for some of the things, but we didn't do all of it, so. Your automation costs, the large capital plan this year, so this year we did doors.
It's so sexy.
Right? So we don't have anything on the docket for the upcoming year. So that's a lot less. Well, that.
And defended us fans.
And we did defense, which surprisingly, after the initial heart attack, came in at a very reasonable price. So. Generally, unbalanced projections upcoming year. We have the current draft, we come in about, let's say, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars or two hundred and twenty-nine-ish thousand dollars over our targets. Target twenty-five percent of the years. But I think we're in pretty good shape. The rest of that is just kind of plucking again like we did last year, and Sandy did the year before that, just talking about how, you know, each year, as long as we keep maximizing that levy increase. Then each successive year has a larger number to increase from. So our levy income keeps going up. That tip income is going up, I don't know how much more grows, but there's these cool things happening in town. We've got the old town that they started construction on last week or three before.
Yeah.
So at some point that will, I think, add for it to. Income, so there's all these various things where our income is. Which allows us to spend any deficit that we can have on our different backs. So I do hope that at some point we will be able to. Stop needing to do that so that we can start putting money at the end of the year back into the special reserve fund. We need to grow that at a certain point so that. Once I work on working capital, building inventory. I imagine that some point we will identify some of the larger goods items that we will need to start taking for, so we need to start growing the special reserve fund again. So that's just a general overview.
Would there be any sense to taking any of these windfalls or lucky? Overages that we have got and putting that towards the loan? That way we repay it and we get less interest on the remainder, so we try to double up that money and shorten our payback period.
Oh. I don't know, I love getting a loan, I'm not sure how that works, I don't know if they would allow that, I've assumed maybe they would, but I could always read up to them.
They mostly do want their money back.
But I mean, one way or another, I'd write if you were wanting.
I was able to knock a year off of my. My mortgage, maybe more between less principal and less interest, so just repay more and some could. And that knocked it down from both ends.
For instance, that. Additional budgeted for us to receive seven thousand dollars. So we had an extra nine thousand dollars. Or there was something else that you were, it was a fifteen thousand dollar thing for a capital expense that you're hoping not to spend.
Oh, right, yeah, just this one, yes.
That might be a good thing to.
So that's coming out of the special reserve fund.
Oh, wow. But you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If there are some things that have well suggested, maybe we should redirect it.
Um, any other general question about the overall? So two of the biggest things to ask you all to think about this evening and give some guidance on are for. Wage increases and for insurance. So. All those various numbers, pink cola, CPI, so they're both. Lower despite the feeling like inflation is still going through. The cost of living, the increase of social security is down to three point two percent. And CPI is down to three point four percent, so. That mine and then knowing if CPI is three point four percent, that probably means that's what. Ptell capped to our levy increase will be next year, so we'll have a war. Just thinking in terms of that. I put together two little scenarios there for a corporate percent increase for wages and a five percent increase. So that involved a up to two percent merit raise and then either a two percent color raise or three percent.
So is the two percent merit raise kind of a given? Or is it really? Decided on by the supervisors.
The second, decided on by the supervisors, not necessarily possible. Hoping we have no zero percent, so it's probably between one and two percent. It will be the race, so. One, go ahead.
Last year, having been one of those people that really advocated for a large pull-up, I'm advocating for the smaller pull-up this year. Just because we made some big strikes last year.
We did.
And I'm not. Disagreeing that things do still be very expensive, I just think we need to hold the line on that.
I mean, yeah, the last two years, we made a lot of. Big strides and increases for salaries and for the benefits. So. We want to, our, with the debt that we have, we partially carry the deficit, so it's good. To make this sustainable and so that the next couple of years chip away at that deficit somewhat. So the four percent is what I have currently using in the draft.
Seemed reasonable to me. We have some discussion?
I agree.
I would agree with the fourth percent as well. Agreed. Like us to what? At this point, may I like the two percent, two percent merit? And then. Also taking that for your chunk to devote to helping out with insurance and those. All right, insurance.
There's insurance, so last year, well, you made all, I kept thinking that they were just been in place forever and had to remind myself that you all just made all these changes, but. So last year, you were doing. Fifty percent for family, ninety percent for the employee. And then this year, the current year, we increased that to ninety-five percent for the employee, kept the same standard. So this year I am advocating for increasing it to a hundred percent for the employee. So. Mine is based on the lowest free plan. But I think. Like, part of my own experience, always having had insurance coverage previously. I think that is just, I think. They also think about whatever healthcare system in general, because I think it is important for the employer to be covering the employees' costs. So I'd like to strive towards this hundred percent of for this coming year for the low rate plan. Possible following year or the year after that, bump it up to the next most.
So it's been kind of our orientation as a board to try to work towards that one percent coverage. It's not. We had, we established a while back, that was, that was a value to us. I'd like to hear from everybody about how you're, how you're sitting with it right now. I, I, I think it's a value and I think it's something that we should all.
I think we should offer it. And I think we have to give it a hundred percent to the employee and fifty percent this year, or budgeting fifty percent for dependent. Depending on costs, we made a statement next year going to a hundred. Maybe we need steps in between depending on what the cost would be to go to a hundred, hundred percent, just a thought.
Oh, no, that's not it.
His statement was to go to a hundred percent of the second most expensive.
Second least expensive.
So the least expensive.
Yeah.
Because I.
Keep the dependent sharing, the family sharing at fifty percent.
Okay, I was like, that's.
As we, I think it would be nice to increase it some more, but I think we, we talked about last year how in order to try and keep it ethical. More important to raise the employees' cost because that benefits everybody taking insurance, whereas not everybody's taking.
Well, that's. Yeah.
So as it is, I, I think it is awesome, I think it's great, but fifty percent is also, I think, fairly generous as well.
Yeah.
Or at least in library layer. So.
Very good.
But no, so I think currently it's the high deductible, the HSA plan, which is our lowest cost plan, so the next lowest cost plan is the PPO with a fifteen hundred dollar cost. That would be. Because I think that's the majority of what allows.
And that's if you're aware.
Yes. And so coming next, coming next.
A hundred percent first.
I was nervous first. When I thought about the numbers.
Thoughts, Rick?
I think it's a hundred fifty would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Love it when there's consensus.
CPI is going down, so. I R F is going up a little bit.
But keep in mind, I R F going up a little bit is purely conjecture. You don't know the rates yet, so there, they haven't had their spring meeting yet where they almost put their favorite rate to be, so. I for both the I R F and for the insurance costs, I probably have over budgeted a little because I'm hoping I R F rate doesn't go up. But I wanted to be prepared in case it did, hopefully it doesn't go up more than that, but that was, so the current rate this year is the seven point eight five. In twenty twenty-three, it was the eight point four one, so I just put twenty twenty-five at eight point four one. It could be up all of a sudden, jump up to ten percent, or it could drop again to seven point two percent, we really don't know. So but it's been trending down over the last couple of years.
I wouldn't expect it to.
If that happened, if, if I R F really jumped up, where would that come from? Would it come out of? Health insurance or where would it come from?
That is a good question, I don't know, I could either.
That's the beauty of the budget, right?
Right? You either rearrange some of the numbers or then I suppose we'd have to be comfortable with a slightly larger deficit. So.
Um, possibility that you will get from our numbers on these two items before we have to approve the budget or?
Um, before June, before May, I'm not a hundred percent positive. I just got an email today from Limerick, which is our health insurance, said their meeting is in May, although I don't remember the date.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, so that'll be after the meeting, so we won't know that rate, but that's when they'll give us the projected rates for.
And therefore, I would think we probably need to run a little bigger deficit and knowing we have that deficit when it comes to spending.
But the health insurance rates went up. Eleven percent this year, so I budgeted thirteen percent, I started initially with fifteen percent. I did my best a little bit, but still. But hope that it's not really going to go thirteen percent, but. I don't know, so.
Can I go with what one of my doctors told me, it's a roadmap is where you think you're going, it's never going to be perfect. And it's just an idea of where you want to land, you're always going to have to tweak throughout the period of life.
Okay, so I think we have consensus on both the. Health insurance and on the co-lender.
Beautiful, thanks. Um, then other highlights. Sending a couple, three people to ILA coming here, hopefully it sounds like Mary Kelly might maybe be presenting.
I would like you to talk more about this potential position in outreach.
Uh, so Paul suggested that to me, I said I wasn't sure. But if we could make it happen this year, but I definitely want to sit down and explore it a lot more, but the idea would be having. Full-time outreach librarian. I think that would then coordinate some of the efforts between youth and adult departments. Maybe increase more outreach. Hopefully reach some of the, you know, the Spanish-speaking population that we've been wanting.
I was going to say, I'm talking bilingual.
I think it would definitely need to be. But it definitely needs a lot of thought and job description and just what will be the impact, what will. If it came from within, in-house, then what will we replace it with, how would that affect? That scheduling, staffing, all those sorts of things, so there's still, it was an idea you threw out to me. Couple weeks ago. Putting in numbers, so I, like I said, probably not unless we manage to have it by the, the end of the year, and if we think we have some. We are underspending and managed to fit it in and start it early, otherwise my goal is hopefully we can. Examine it, flush it out this year and see what is suitable for the next year.
Well, my, my initial feedback about that is we absolutely should focus it on a bilingual position. And tie it back to our strategic plan, which is to reach. That population, the Latino population in a better way than we have been. And I think that if there were feet on the ground. That would certainly increase. The perception of the library with the Latino population.
Right, I agree.
Well, I would say that's to do other libraries. Yeah, do positions like, I mean, I was just.
I mean, it all depends on.
Oh, really?
The size and their funds.
Well, and probably also, but if they feel they have underserved communities that they want to.
But no, there are a lot of libraries that do that, so.
I mean, I figured there were, I was just curious.
Yeah, they do, I mean, I think often a youth department naturally does a lot of their own outreach, supporting the schools and whatnot. But I think having. Health departments and the fact that Paul oversees, you know, it's public services. Operation, but you don't get a lot of lot of rates. But I think it'd be good to, you know, coordinate the efforts between these departments. Again, another piece of to work out is how they would work with Kathy as well. But yeah, but I think it's important that then they're dedicated, they have more time to try and reach out, you know. Various organizations or populations in town and make those inroads relationships and have more time to spill. That helps us, whether it's, you know, doing, adapting some of the programming to better suit the needs or finding out something else. Oh, we should really try doing this service, I think that person will be better equipped or better positioned to try to find out some of those things.
Sometimes I feel like one of the, in some ways, there's plenty of islands, I mean, in the sense that, like you could say, maybe we'll build in Fox Tower and Summer Lakes and, you know, you could say, you know, now that we're developing this other, you know, like the senior living community over there. The, you know, the other developments that they're sort of enclosed and trying to connect them to the rest of towns that were into the other services. I mean, say the one out there by the movie theaters, how often do they necessarily know about what's, you know, in town here, you know? I think your comment, establishing relationships, I think if that person wants to get in place for a while. Would be able to develop a little bit more trust in the library from the Hispanic population. And I know that's a huge issue, no matter what suburb you live in, it's trust between our already built relations and government entities, which we are, whether we like to call it something or not, but. Would be very much for them.
Well, even just in. Spanish-speaking population here is immigrant or not, but just even from my experience in El Chapo. Those folks that came from, from Europe.
Yes.
Just a lot of people in other countries don't necessarily realize that the library is there, what it offers, and that here is free because it's included with taxes, there's a lot of other places and countries, yeah.
That pay. Or being a certain class.
So I think sometimes it's just even. There's certainly just distrust as well being in the government organization, but I think there's also just the lack of knowledge of what we can offer.
So your plan is just to continue to flesh out this position this year? And then this would definitely be if we choose to continue part of your standing budget for next year.
But I feel like there's a lot of pieces and challenges to add together, a definite well thought out plan and how it impacts everything before we went ahead and did it, so.
And I think it's wise to consider everything rather than jumping into that deep water right away, so.
I would have liked to try to work it in this year, but I felt like there's enough to plan out, it's a new idea, so I think. Put it out there.
Good idea.
Barbara, you have another question? I think you were asking about consultants.
Oh, that, yes, that, so, um, yeah, I did ask you about that, didn't I? Somewhere in here, it says.
Page six.
Page six at the top. While I do still hope for us to make the next strategic plan our own. I was surprised at that because we haven't done a strategic plan our own. So. Jason has a great idea.
I may have misremembered from last year, I thought I had heard that, sure, we can put that in, but maybe we. So maybe I'm misremembering her, but anyway, I signed up for a three session online thing with Amanda Standifer, who is issue planning consultant for libraries. But she's doing a do-it-yourself strategic planning. So she recognizes that. To make her still make some money, but she recognizes that a lot of our libraries are, you know. Budget constraints and can't necessarily afford. As you pointed out, consultants cost a lot of money.
Yeah.
So the hope is maybe it'll give us some tips of a way for us to do it small scale, but still effectively. So. It starts tomorrow, the first session, and then it's the following two, three days, so.
What I would love to hear, what, yeah, whether you think this is something we can take. That's a lot of lots.
It would help the deficit.
Yes, so I mean.
So you did a placeholder holder ten thousand dollars, but it's likely a consultant.
We probably, I think last year in the budget planning, I originally put like thirty thousand, so let's chop that down, so I made it fifteen thousand. Obviously, we're not going to get around to spending that. We have to spend it some consulting on the plaque survey. But yeah, so ten thousand is probably too small, I could raise it if we still want to have that cushion in place in case we decide we do want to use one. But I would really kind of hoping that, because I feel like we've got good bones for the current plan. Um, so I thought maybe there'd be a way for us to save some of that money and. Um, so I thought maybe there'd be a way for us to save some of that money and contribute ourselves.
And maybe it's just every other time it's we got consultants involved this time, since we do have good ones. Just elaborate on it with in-house work.
Strategic plans only is clues to the time you made it, but if we. The work on making one based on what you've learned and what you've experienced in your own planning and elsewhere. Out in stone is it? Or could we hire somebody to come in and tweak it a little bit, which wouldn't cost the same amount as running a whole show?
Yes. I mean, and it's always, it's up to us to decide how long. Before, but I think the overall philosophy will. Not necessarily be set in stone, but it should be more kind of fluid and concrete and safe. Yeah, tweak it as time moves on because it will change.
Can you remind me what the normal timeline line for revision is? How often does the strategic plan need to be reviewed and updated?
Um, I mean, it used to be you did a plan for five years. Now, because, you know, times keep changing faster and faster, tends to be three to five years. Uh, some people do it every two years. There's some stuff there to do every year, but to me, that's.
Well, my thought is that 2029, at the end of 2029, we should be releasing our doc, so we don't have more money to work with than that at that time.
So, and I'm, I'm interested to hear more about when I do the session, to hear some more of the ideas and philosophies. Um, I know from one of the sessions I went to last year for the Dr. University, the presenter, they had a one-hour session on planning. A lot about. Making it evergreen, which spoke to me. Libraries are innovative and we're always trying to adapt into the times and we need new communities. But in my mind, a lot of the times, the core services that we provide, you know, all the materials, technology. Programming, space, like a lot of that just doesn't change. And so I think setting some of these kind of more evergreen. Goals and initiatives that you want, that you think you're probably just gonna keep doing forever. And then it's just whether it's every time you do your plan or you just set, you know, every one or two years, you're gonna review and see, okay. Are there new things we can do to meet that goal? So it's just kind of tweaking the issues that are under those goals rather than. Rather than refamping the whole entire plan every time, which I know had a lot of people have done in the past.
To your suggestion of an outreach manager, I think that person would bring a lot of information.
Agreed.
To a revision of a strategic plan. So maybe they're just giving more merit and we tried to do it in-house this time and then the next time. I like saving money.
Well, me too. Take good notes.
Okay, well, something that is near and dear, are we finished with that? Something that's near and dear to my heart are, are ebooks and audiobook offerings. Because I've seen my own personal use increase dramatically. That's why I'm kind of making the assumption that that's happening. More and more in our, in our population. And, you know, last year on the first pass of the budget, we're like, that's not enough. And I kind of feel that way again. I don't know if anyone else has looked at it, but it's like, uh, I just want, that seems to be. I would never have guessed that I would be such an avid user, so I'm assuming that that's happening to other people as well. So I'm on page seven.
Which is.
Of the big budget.
What are we currently running ahead of? What's, do you know the percentage of our budget that we're ahead of today this year?
Oh, for the.
For what Barbara's talking about. Is that the number? Is this a good number on this year today?
Look like we're, oh, my projected, I projected we're gonna spend 51,000 for the year, which is $2,400 under. Again, that's projections.
Yes.
But we, since we put. That cap of the item price.
Yeah.
In, that has helped. So we've been running about 2,900. Change, uh, for hoopla as opposed to 3,000 or more. So for some reason, for March, it dropped down to 2,600. But, um, but even at 3,000 a month, that would be 36. I have it currently at 35. I did have it at 36 at one point. I increased the hoopla and the overdrive amounts, but not by two months. So, but I definitely agree. I think more and more it's getting more use. I will say as my attention span, eyesight change. I've been reading more ebooks and comments.
You can have it lit up, yeah, the whole thing.
So it's nice. It used to be diehard paper only, but.
Barbara, what type of increase are you suggesting?
Um, well, so. I am grateful that we have hoopla and overdrive, but I am often frustrated by the lack of, by the long waits for items. In overdrive, they're very long waits often, even for stuff that's not brand new, stuff that's several years old. It's long waits. My just, my, my book club just decided we're gonna read something by Toni Morrison that's like. Probably seven or eight years old. And it's a long wait. And I'm like, so probably that cap. Have to do with that, or I don't know if we can.
Well, that cap was just for hoopla, of which there are no wait.
Right. Okay. So, but there, there must be a way to quantify or, or, you know, have more money in the system. So that there are more copies available or something.
There are. We can certainly, I.
You know, so I, it's just that it happens a lot and I'm on waiting list a long time for things. It's okay, but it's just a little frustrating sometimes.
Has your staff taken?
I don't, I don't have a number. I'm just thinking we should probably be a little more assertive about offering this.
I just was curious. Jason, have you heard that comment from, uh, any or anybody here?
I don't know that I've heard it specifically here. I think I've just heard that comment generally about overdrive. When I was at Park, we had both overdrive and Baker and Taylor offering.
Oh, yes.
And so many, which that was a program funded through the state rails. Um, and so many times it'd be like, you don't want to wait four months, go check on the other service because people didn't. The overdrive has been around longer and so has established itself as well-known and popular. So the other services, like, oh, we didn't realize that was there. You don't have to wait. But we can certainly. I, I don't know all the ins and outs of how we're doing it here. I know, um, overdrive has an. Banned program where you can buy things that are just limited to your own patrons and don't go out to the consortium that you're in. Are we, we're in E Media Mall. So everybody, all the other libraries in E Media, we'd be able to check it out, just one little picture. So that is a thought. I don't know if we're already doing that or not. We all, every library contributes to money to the hold manager. For the group. And so when there are enough holds, I'm sure it's set differently for different, different things. But say every time there's a new fifth extra hold that's placed, it triggers a new purchase. And so there's this pot of money for the hold manager that we all contribute to. So I don't know. Like to that. So particularly as being part of a consortium, um, I don't know, I'm still not yet familiar with all. Which libraries are in our consortium? I used to be in. I don't know why all Swan is not in the same consortium, but they drove Gossel up into three different.
Oh.
Oh, so I would used to be in, uh, media on demand and we own a park this with Oak Park. Let me tell you, you know, frequently frustrated because all the Oak Park patrons generously putting the bulbs on all the things and it's hard for.
But maybe that segmentation has something to do with hold issue.
So, yeah, I don't know if there's, if, if there's a couple of larger libraries that are in our group that are.
True. I am noticing that putting the most money into, in our materials into ebooks. So I suppose I shouldn't be complaining.
No, it's, it's growing and it's. It's a, it's growing in popularity and.
It's very popular and.
And I'm assuming, I mean, I'm hoping it won't be for years and years yet, but I'm assuming publishers, publishers. Slowly shifting toward wanting to do more e-publishing and not print publishing. I don't know.
Yeah, but they have that.
I'm assuming.
Publishers have not been taking any steps towards making that more reasonable.
No, that's part of the issue with this, you know, I think I've been on a place for how the publishers and how they treat print books way differently than ebooks. And they'll charge us exorbitant prices, you know, of, you know, for you, if you just buy it on Amazon, it'll cost you whatever, 16, $22 for the ebook. But they charge the library 50 dollars or 60 dollars. So.
So we'll all get a list of books.
Unfortunately, you can't know that. The way it's also, you can't do that, which is.
I know. I'm just saying. And I wonder if at some point, I don't know how, but I just. AI is gonna go into this somehow in the end. I predict that.
Yeah, it's gonna pretty much touch everything.
Well, I would happily put for some more money. I'm a firm believer in the collection.
I, I would like to see that, but I'm not sure at two, you know, at what expense, you know? I'm not sure what, what we would cut down instead. I don't have any knowledge about.
Wow.
You know, how, how, how many, you know, we've got almost $10,000 in periodicity. Is that really, uh, is that really a used, just, it's not very much money, but it's, it doesn't still. Should be, can be justified, that amount of money for something that's not useful.
So.
Not sure how much use there is.
That is a good point. Uh, when did you say your first, tomorrow is your first consultant, uh, strategic plan? And you're putting 10 grand in the budget for that?
Yeah.
Uh, if you feel, if you get good thoughts over that, maybe we reduce that 10,000 number. And put a little bit of the 7,500 for account if we need it. And then there's, that's not a lot, but it's something, something, yeah. But if you come out thinking, you know, we, we don't have the bandwidth or the resources. Or ability that we can't cut from there, but it's just a thought.
It is a good thought.
And you also have your other, this outreach manager, you didn't put anything in the budget for that, did you? I was just gonna say, because I don't think we need a lot for that. It's probably not gonna happen until later. But there's 10 grand there that you might be able to.
And another 10 grand that is potentially usable. Was under the, again, under the consultants. I had 10,000 for. Website. So a 6,000 to communicate, the website, uh, the program, calendar registration and the. Special census happening. We are most likely gonna jump over 15,000 population, which puts us in a new pricing bracket. So when our contract is up in 2020, June, June, I think, 2026. And then we renew the contract. We'll have to get them updated population numbers and we'll select 70.
Another thought, how firm is your number for the, what are you calling it, interactive and the discovery? Is that?
It's not firm. It was, you know, some things are.
You have no idea what.
You can find ones that are more reasonable, but sometimes the.
Just.
Well-constructed, sturdy items like that are sometimes more expensive than they are.
Because I would want to take that maybe even because it's good for that age group, but I was just wondering, is that a. To be clutch on it a little bit too.
We could.
But I think Barbara's point is well-taken. I like an examination of the periodicals project. How much is actually being checked out? Because I know a good number of people I don't find it with do their periodicals online now. They even do their newspapers. No, can't take the newspapers away. Because I know people come in just to read the newspaper, but I'm wondering about the periodicals.
And we can double-check and see if that's going down, but some of the. I have noticed that we don't have. What is called, because we don't have. But there are, there are digital magazine platforms, but. Zineo, they're not called Zineo anymore, or they, right. But anyway, there are a couple of those. Um, but two years ago, overdrive got in the business of having.
Well, there was my next.
Magazines, and I think that it's become pretty popular.
So is that gonna increase if we lower what we, are we gonna pay in another area? Such as over.
I mean. I, I will ask Paul and we'll.
Thank you.
Uh, but anyway, back to my other point about, uh, so the website, so we still have until June 2026, but. Um, so it may not be till, so this 10,000 may not actually be needed until next fiscal year. But at some point, we need to, to force to like, start having a conversation about whether we want to go or if we want to find a different system that. Has all those components or break it up to be website and then there are systems that just do the reservation account or regular. Doing people might be more cost-effective, but it is a large project to restart with new platforms.
And so who would be part of that conversation? All of them?
I think so, or especially the people that are involved with it. Kathy and David are involved with the website. Paul and Jackie are involved with room reservations. Those are the key things, well, everybody's, but, but, but yeah, so, but one of the ideas was, would you be able to? Have possibly somebody on staff. Maybe David, uh, get in the business of. Redesign the website and find the platform that we could. And for ourselves rather than for somebody else.
See if it's very interesting. Does David have experience? He has enough experience in it. He, he's very technical savvy, technically savvy, I should say. Uh, he's very, uh, versed in accessibility guidelines and. And how we, how we show our images on our website, the, the style of lettering, the color of the kindness and how it has all of that. You know, it's a great, yes, very interesting somehow somebody.
Well, he's probably just picked it up as he's.
Well, we should definitely keep that conversation going.
So, but it may be, yeah, it definitely is.
That's, that seems like a really big project, like that.
It is, hence why.
Yeah.
Right. So I don't know whether the 10,000 was just in case we wanted to get that started earlier rather than later. We did decide we wanted to hire a developer to redesign for us, um, but most likely that probably is not actually needed until this year 2026. Thought of that more after I put it in.
And maybe that's a number we can trim as well.
So we can do that too. And then reallocate that towards.
Is that my body, standard system or is it? Is it that we need to have something to?
Nope. Duncan has priced them out.
Oh, okay.
Yep. This system that he looked at is easy to add to cameras. System that we already have established.
So is this just something, though, that we would need to review if somebody reported an incident? Or is this something that, say, somebody would be monitoring or?
Or reviewing if there's an incident. So I, I. So I, I dislike having the cameras, but they can come in useful for when there are incidents.
Right, I know we've had somebody that had, I don't know, whether you mean computer or somebody to diverse.
So we don't, I mean, we budgeted ten cameras, I don't know how many we'll actually get, and I don't want to necessarily put them everywhere and have it in a state, but having them, if we can identify a few key points.
That's, that's my, I was wondering is how you were gonna identify the points where you were deciding. So, as well as you could say the quantity, I mean, not that, again, not having them everywhere, but how you would identify where it might be necessary or helpful to have them.
Yeah, we're gonna.
So, yeah, it's more in the sense that rather than the necessary costs, but it say it's. You know, not that we need a security guard, but just, you know, how you would do a security analysis of what would be necessary.
Been really nice to my first year here to. The. Member behavior. Nice and mild.
Well, but with the whole issue surrounding banned books and some of the things that have happened in other libraries. I think the cameras, even if there was five or six of them in the building, would allow the police some ability to.
Yeah.
Monitor or assist with that situation.
We do have. Free working or both? We have one at the staff entrance up here. We have one at the main entrance, and then we have one in the team.
That sounds fun. Team lounge or the other.
Though ideally we're wanting to be, you know, for security purposes, just in general, having one at the lower level staff entrance and lower level main entrance at the minimum. We all look together trying to identify, are there any other spots that we can actually go? Fire rooms. Apply angles to capture as much space as possible, I mean, you don't need to put in a whole lot. Mixed bag of things about cameras, but you're right, with all the things going on, you probably could have them in place, feel secure, and then if things should happen, then we've got spaces covered.
And it doesn't become just for the security of our members, it's for our team, and that's important too. Sorry, do we have, do we have one of the staff entrance?
Cameras are available.
Yes.
See them at gas stations, hospitals, police departments, I think that those people wouldn't need any cameras. And every place, the more the merrier, and even just the, uh, the decoy.
Oh, yeah.
You mean just having something up in the, on the wall that doesn't even work?
There's some legality with that in your insurance policy, if you're not giving an operating camera. This is just, but, well, we'll complain about the cameras, we should send them to Europe because.
It's like you're watching a British, British crime dramas, CCTV is everywhere.
All right, we are six minutes before we need to start our next meeting, I'm wondering if there's anything else we need to discuss, might wanna have a little break before we start.
One off the cuff thing, I noticed that we're up. Ten times for our refunds to other libraries for materials lost by Warrenville patrons. Are we borrowing first editions of some?
I mean, that's really hard numbers to predict, I'm just, you know, if. If people check stuff out from other libraries and then don't bring it back. If they check out enough of it, it doesn't matter if it's a first edition or not, it's just whatever the place they cost to get a library centered into that item.
So here, I wonder, do we know the titles of these books? Are you notified of which books we are paying for?
Usually. Is there any connection to some of those?
I haven't seen many of that, any.
You know where my money was kind of, there's an easy way to check it out somewhere else and have it returned.
And there are people who do that.
Yes.
But no, I mean, this, I think it's just, you know, that and flow. We're hearing things on time, not at all, or not.
But that, that is also then to the page. Yeah, performance.
Yeah, so there's that cost that we pay, but then hopefully the patron then paying us.
There's a tons of them in.
Right.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and just adjourn our committee of the whole, and so we can have a quick.
Do we need a motion?
I think so, yeah. We do, yeah.
I believe we adjourn the committee of the whole for the twenty, twenty-five fiscal year budget.
Got you. Motion was made by Dr. Pika. Trustee Pika.
Not gonna live long enough.
Seconded by trustee Lisan, all in favor.
Aye.
We are in, okay, six, I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the board of trustees, trustees of the Warrenville Public Library District. Is Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and it is seven, seven, yeah. Start with the roles call, trustee Stoll, president, trustee Warren.
President.
Trustee Pika.
Present.
Trustee Lisan.
Here.
Groshur is here and executive director Stulman and our lovely panel of our heads.
I'll say.
Motion was made by trustee Stoll, seconded by trustee Warren, we need to make any changes before we do this. We don't, we're gonna just keep it all the same, right? Trustee Stoll, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Presentations?
No. Ors.
All right, no public comments? Any correspondence?
Nope.
Nope. All right. Trustee Stoll, you're on.
Yeah. This is okay.
Item A, approved minutes of the March twentieth, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting. Item B, receiving file financial report for March twenty twenty-four. Item C, approve two point six percent market adjustment to the library's wage scale effective July first, twenty twenty-four. D, approve and adopt policy number two fifty-five, maker space. All right, trustee Stoll has read our consent agenda, could I have a motion please?
Still move.
Second.
A motion was made by trustee Warren and seconded by trustee Pika, trustee Lisan.
Aye.
Trustee Pika.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Stoll.
Aye.
Trustee Groshur. Moving on to the regular agenda, approving payments.
I move that we pay invoices in the amount of sixty-two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents. For the period of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four through April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Including electronic payments and checks ninety-eight seventy-seven through ninety-nine twenty-five.
I'll say.
Motion was made by trustee Pika and seconded by trustee Warren. Uh, trustee Stoll.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Pika.
Aye.
Trustee Lisan.
Aye.
Trustee Groshur votes aye. Payments are approved, all right, item HB.
I move that we transfer a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from a commercial checking amount account to the operating checking account.
Second. Motion was made by trustee Pika and seconded by trustee Lisan, trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Stoll.
Aye.
Trustee Lisan.
Aye.
Trustee Pika.
Aye.
Trustee Groshur votes aye. Those, uh, transfer of funds for. Now, unfinished business, item nine. Brandon, would you like to go on a field trip to Jason's office to see?
Oh, to you.
The item.
It is here.
Field trip. There we go. There's a pitch. We'll be right back. Oh, it's very cool.
I'm very excited, I like the book that's been from the park to.
So the book, the book piece is generic.
Yeah.
It doesn't have.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, but it's pretty.
Well, Jake, the show is gonna hang out.
You're not gonna be seeing it.
Maybe Wednesday is.
It's just a lot.
Yeah, I think it'd be nicer up here than back there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we were talking about where to put it, I think it's hard of, I think currently the commission. Doesn't have the impression that that front beam, position of the front door is where we're gonna hang it, which is still perfectly fine place, whether we want it facing forward or facing inward. I'm not sure. There's the space between the beams. But if we do that, that's a little more directly centered from the front door and the, the. Also, I forgot his name.
All right.
All right, thank you, excuse me, uh, from the all right piece, but if we do it from the peak, then we need to rent a lift, because we don't have ladders. The other option is in the back, which is a great space, but it's further away and probably a little less traffic.
It's, we'll see. Yeah, would the city have a lift that we could choose?
I think Lee was gonna ask.
No. The public works.
Here comes here.
The park district offered their ladder, but it's not quite tall.
Okay, we don't have any alarms in that area, or would they anticipate putting any cameras in that area that you're hanging? Security one?
No, the. Cause all those, they're all pointing down at the traffic area and it's gonna be hanging.
Just checking.
Because he flies at night, you could fall.
So he does have two little hooks on the back of his head.
He's very cute.
So that'll help stabilize it with two wires rather than just one wire.
And he must be very.
But it should be relatively easy installation, we finally agreed on a time, it's gonna be next Wednesday morning.
That's next Wednesday?
Yeah. So I'm excited one way or another, so we just have to finalize which, which spot, which way he's facing. But I think it's gonna be great, it'll be.
Have a new pet that you don't have to feed. Yep.
What was that?
Have a new pet, we don't have to feed it.
That's right.
Very.
Like what?
All right, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
To item ten, new business, approved proposal from Siget for audit services for fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six.
I move to approve the proposal from Siget for audit services for fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six.
Second. Proposal. Motion, thank you. Motion was made by trustee Stoll and seconded by trustee Pika, I would just like to say that. I think that we should move forward with this particular proposal from Siget, but that before we do another three year, because we're kind of backing up to some, uh, our time right now. Before we do another three year proposal, we should go out for bid, because there are many good auditing firms and Siget has gotten. Quite expensive, that's just my opinion.
I think they're truly interested in keeping our business secure, you know, it's the increase that comes after year two and after year three, so. I, I did make a note of that, are there other options, could we, could we just do in due diligence?
Exactly.
Very pleased with the increases they offered, so, especially the fifty dollar. That's unheard of.
No, it's four hundred.
It's ours, but, yes, but it's still. You know.
Um, okay, so, uh, we'll just go ahead and vote on this unless there's further discussion. Nope, trust Lisan.
Aye.
Trustee Pika.
Aye.
Trustee Warren. Trustee Stoll.
Aye.
Trustee Groshur votes aye, motion has passed. All right, moving on to the director's report. I think it's very interesting that we have this wonderful opportunity called iLead Learning Portal. With lots and lots of, uh, trustee resources at our disposal, so yay.
I spent, um, yesterday and today going through all of them. So it is good, and I feel like for everybody here, or even trustees at this point, it might be more of a review rather than. New, but I think for new trustees like Connie, or I mean, letting the future of the community, I think it is free resources. And they are planning on adding more modules in the future that are a little more, which might be potentially more useful for all of you, but. They certainly encourage you, but you, you all have L two accounts already, um, so you can certainly sign up if you want. They're all, they're either just some stuff to read on the page, some external links to some resources, or some videos. The longest video was twelve minutes, but most of them were either four minutes or eight, so they're all very bite sized. There's no, whatever case you want.
And there's strategic planning and.
It does, it was brief, but, yeah, so, yeah, I encourage you all to check it out.
Yeah, can we schedule? Like you say, we have an L two account, that sounds like a foreign language to me, and I have no idea where to access that.
So in L two, and I have no idea how Sandy got in setting that up for you previously, but really, I looked and you all have one, so.
Okay.
We don't even know that we have L two.
So L two is. What was that?
What would we have needed in the account?
Maybe it was that training that we had to take, maybe? Uh, uh, the.
For the grant.
Retraining?
Yeah.
Boy training, maybe, I don't know.
No, I think that's sort of the. That's sort of the comfort.
Oh, you're right.
So, the L two is through Rails, it's a learning account, it's been around for a while, it evolved over the years. But essentially it has, it will install the libraries that are in Rails, and if people at that library have added them, then it'll, you know, list all staff that are affiliated with that library. So I was happy to see that Sammy did. Made everybody listed and affiliated with, with the library, which I don't think everybody does, some places just have. So, so in one way, it's an informational piece that somebody could look this up and see, oh, there's all the staff, here's all the trustees. So, um, in terms of staff, it's a lot more useful when I log into the Swan support site, it uses my L two account. There's a bunch of continuing education things offered through Rails, which you go through the L two site for. So since this is part of, I think the iLead portal was put together by Heartland, which is the southern library system, that's southern half of the state. But it was in conjunction, you know, with the state of Illinois. Illinois State Library, so it, it makes sense that they are using. It as well to log into that, so I'm perfectly happy to email out or remind her about that, and they'll listen to how to log into your L two account.
Please, yes.
Sounds like a training.
Was that L two?
Yeah.
The one I had to do?
Yeah.
No, that was through.
Oh, you're.
There are so many accounts from.
I know, that's why I'm like.
That was funny.
But if, do you want somebody to come and give a demo of it? Or I can.
You can send us instructions, we can follow all the, we can do that. We can follow.
Okay. We're all technical and savvy enough to. Or you send that information.
All right, so we don't get to hear about PLA till next month, because Connie really wants to chime in, I suspect. But I would love to hear a highlight.
Well, a lot of the, I will reiterate that one of the highlights that, uh, Mary Kelly has, I guess, in. But one of the, the speakers were all very powerful, uh, that they had at the start of the day, and just in talking about. You know, but there's a, a large focus, I think, for the whole conference on DEI, it's just.
All right.
As libraries were places for everybody.
Yeah.
And we want everybody to belong, and so there's just a lot of, you know, focusing on that, being kind to people, you know. What was the, the three?
I think it's true, necessary.
Yeah.
Necessary, true, kind, oh, three.
So that was from the first day's speaker, it was just like, you know, essentially like, think before you speak, like, what is it, you know, how do, you know, even if you get into a frustrated situation, like, thinking. About your patrons, what are they going through, what don't you know, and just trying to treat them with kindness and compassion and help them. So I think that was just. So I think that was just a big theme overall. Unfortunately, one takeaway was that I think with all the, you know, book challenges and the things, you know, the things happening in library land, I got general impression that libraries are tired, stressed. I believe there is a lot of focus on, you know, self-care, how to care for the staff, respond to things. It's just like, I think we're all very tired and stressed. So, um but there is, uh like I said, it was before the strategic strategic planning session was probably one of the last sessions I went to, which is why it's out of mind. I went to full time, so they're all blending together a bit, but there is one that just talked about, um, you know, I think it was like a crisis communication uh session, but there's a lot of them that overlapped with that theme, but this talked about how it's very useful to have, you know, your vision and mission and your value statements. Uh which I believe on part of our current strategic plan and far as I know, we haven't gotten to yet, what was to, for us to make a, a set of value statements. So, but they said, you know, then whether it's somebody is challenging a book or somebody doesn't like your display, or whether there is an issue, you know, internal issue is that. Like you can look at your value statements and mission goal and say, here's what we're trying to achieve. This behavior is not aligned with that. And so this is a very good, you know, starting point for I like that idea. So knowing that, I think part of our strategic plan is currently that I'm not sure that we'll finish before June, so we'll roll it over to the next strategic plan, but I think, you know, updating our mission, mission and that we are opting a value statement.
Right, this app you can't add because you did refer to.
Oh, did I?
Yeah, this strategic project priorities.
Okay, yes, I might have added that.
What were those three words, Mary?
True, necessary.
Yes. What was it?
True, necessary, kind.
Thank you. I got two out of three.
It's on most of the chalkboards at our school.
I was.
Teachers are always like.
Am I supposed to know that?
Is it true? Is it necessary? And are we being kind about it? It's usually when somebody wants to tell on somebody else. Um, okay, moving on to the other uh reports. Did you have anything else to say or highlight?
Uh.
I just happened to notice on Jackie's report, this thing that said completely three short no before training sessions assigned by Dunkin'.
Yeah.
I'm like, what is no before? And Jason, Jason, in, you know, informed me that their little soundbite cybersecurity um sessions.
And they're short.
And they're short, and we could potentially have access? I would like that. I don't wanna be assigned, however. But I would like to have access for however long you think, you know, if you're like, oh, we'll give you access for the next month on this one, or I don't know, whatever, but.
Didn't you say, didn't you do this previously? You do it all the time.
Like the, you know, for families to basic to security.
I don't know, but this sounds very familiar. Thank you.
I, I wouldn't mind getting one from you every now and then. Do you like, here, trustees, maybe you might wanna hear this four minute soundbite on this thing.
But it does assign it generally speaking, you could give them that.
Sometimes.
Like all three of them are. There's three of them sometimes. It's just.
It, it's just, it's just that if, if there's so much happening and so much changing all the time in the world of cybersecurity. And I always feel like, what's that next thing gonna be? And am I gonna totally get duped by it, you know? So it'd be nice to just kind of know if something's coming towards me, just to have a heads up.
And there's also a soap opera attached called The Inside Man.
Yeah.
Which is tied in the lessons of, you never got it. It is like a soap opera. The lessons of the theme of whether you know, whatever the lesson is for the weekend, I write it, so.
It's very weird. I'm ready. I'm gonna be watching for that. Boy, I hope I get this email.
So you could assign them, uh for all of us, you assign it with a deadline, or you can just assign it with open and different.
Yes.
So there you go. If you completed, great, and if you done.
They're letting you know.
Letting you know, cheers.
Hi, dude.
Sure.
Yeah, sure, son.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. All right, uh other trustees, do you have any comments on the other reports here? There's a lot happening.
Yeah.
So much happening.
I, I do wanna, I know Paul's gonna be celebrating a birthday, but those books before kindergarten and books before high school, that is impressive information. I, those are two great programs. I don't know if those are at other libraries or just ours, but I it's very.
It's a great thing.
Yes, yeah. I was very impressed with the results that it's generated.
I hadn't heard of the Hundred Books Before High School before, so we introduced that.
That's the one that really is impressive to me, is to get kids like that, to do that now. Thank you.
So Kathy, your logo redesign project. I'm just seeing that logo popping up everywhere.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
Like where?
I don't know where. I don't know where.
Yeah, I can't see it anyplace.
I really love seeing that pop up everywhere.
Beautiful.
Great job.
Great job.
I mean, I really, really like this logo, so say thanks again to David. It's a good design.
I think it even coming up. You can tonight, Stephanie, that got another compliment saying beautiful, pops, modern.
And I may be kidding myself, but I did go to the Park District Health and Wellness Expo and was talking to, and I don't have everyone, I mean, the lady from the city who does all the, all of and, you know, she knows I'm from the library, and three or four people, by the time I left there came up, don't you from the library? I love that new logo. I love that.
Oh, great.
So it is making its way through time. So very good.
We're gonna need new name tags. For all wearing them all the time anyway.
Budget for that, to me.
Yes, that'll be five books out of your pool.
Okay, never mind.
That's for Barbara.
What?
What's it worth to you?
No.
More access, more access, more.
We're gonna start a barter system for you.
I just wanna move that.
There are.
We got them at the front desk.
At the, at the desk.
Oh, really?
Yes. They are available to one of your public libraries. I have a card, so that.
I got a card. All right, any other uh library or trustee comments on the department report?
I loved the Facebook post with the pilot airplane that I thought.
That's adorable. Yeah.
I think uh somebody here might go who that is.
Really?
Yeah, looks like my grandson Ben.
There we go.
He's for it. It's hard to be trapped.
They grow up.
And Mary Kella, this is a great picture of you.
It is.
Yeah.
And I like them all. I love them all. They're rude. It's really cool. And I like the comment in Paul's report about the bank presentation. Yes, that was very, very nice. That person took time to write to you and.
Yeah, that was, she asked about us during that program sometime last summer or fall. But, yeah.
They're lovely.
Great job.
Yeah.
Hey. President's report. We have our next meeting on Wednesday, May fifteenth. And it isn't, oh, it is at six o'clock. Do we think we need to meet at six? Do we think we need to meet at six? It's for budget, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
Six thirty?
What is the plan once we that, so this is it? And then we just approve that at the gym meeting or do we need to say?
Well, no, I would bring revisions to next month, but I think what we did last year is that you know, since we got the larger discussions out of the way at committee meeting in April, I think last year we just rolled the budget talk into
That's what I wanted.
New business of a regular meeting.
Oh, we did do that.
We just talked about it during the meeting and then in gym we approved it.
Just like we did, I'm in the policies.
I didn't know if we, we wanna do it six thirty, just because like Connie's not here, Jill's not here, and then, you know, since they weren't able to make part of the discussion, if they had questions or just to, you know, like I said, a half hour, I don't think we need a whole hour, but.
Right, but, but what we did last year, I think we could do again next year.
I do too. I think, I think so.
And just roll it into a regular meeting.
Yeah.
It might make the regular meeting a little bit longer, but it
Yeah, but it's still. We don't have many things to discuss, really.
Be here an hour, so.
Okay, let's roll it into the regular meeting. That would be lovely.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, so little Connie, trustee banquet. Uh, who's going? Just, just Rick?
Yep.
Okay. Have that, Rick, represent.
Bring souvenirs.
There is a flyer for the Atlas training day. If anybody's.
Oh, that's uh May eighteenth. I've been interested in that.
You may interest in that?
Yeah, let me just.
Did you get that, Jackie?
Yes, I did.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
Well, that's a dicey topic, trustee directed relations. I don't know. All right.
Also, you don't think that it'd be valuable to find out that we proved our trustee.
No, we just tell him what to do all the time.
I was just gonna say.
Suppose that shouldn't be on record, should it?
I think y'all agree, no.
Maybe Jason.
Okay, uh let's move on. Oh, statement of economic interest due May first. I did mine already.
John.
Anybody else?
I did.
Bob, people, get on it. You've got that little email hanging out there.
We have two books left.
Huh? Get your.
We have two people left who need to file it.
Me. Texas, I'm done. Texas is done.
That's good. Now you gotta do the economic interest.
Statement of economic.
Don't forget that there's a lot that you don't um Jason sent us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or gave us in our PECAS.
Yeah.
Uh the kind of the
So if you read those.
Guidelines.
Yeah.
Way easier.
Yeah.
Way easier. I always forget when I do it and I'm always like, do I have to? All right, let's um, let's move on to treasurer's report.
Everything looks good. Thank you.
It was such a technical report.
Yes.
All right.
Secretary?
Uh, everything looks good.
Excellent. Any, we can, oh, we we uh, we'll be doing our committee report in close session, yeah, for.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Trustee comments?
Everything looks good. Thanks again to wonderful uh management team.
Keeps everything rolling.
Yep.
Excellent. All right, I don't have any items for information or discussion. How about you? Nope. All right, then, we are going to move into close session.
I move that move to enter close session as allowed by I L C S. One twenty slash two, scene one, for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public.
Second. Motion was made by trustee Pika and seconded by trustee LaZan to move to another session. All in favor?
Oh, no, this is a.
Yeah.
Trustee Stoll?
I.
Trustee Warren?
I.
Trustee Pika?
I.
Trustee LaZan?
I.
Trustee Derosha votes aye. Wait.
An open session at eight oh five.
We do roll call. Trustee Warren?
Present.
Trustee Pika?
Present.
Trustee LaZan?
Yeah.
Trustee Stoll?
I.
Trustee Derosha is here and executive director is stolen this year. So I would entertain a motion to
me. Okay, so the suggested motion, I move that the executive director receives two percent COLA increase and two percent merit increase in salary for fiscal year twenty five.
Second. Motion was made by trustee Stoll and seconded by trustee Pika. Am I writing that down? Secretary?
Yes.
All right. Trustee LaZan?
I.
Trustee Pika?
I.
Trustee Warren?
I.
Trustee Stoll?
I.
Trustee Derosha votes aye. The motion passes. Is there any other items for discussion?
When does he need his goals? Next month?
Oh, right, for this coming year.
I have my calendar.
Look at that.
For you to ponder, it's mostly just a copy of like the two from this year that I didn't.
Yeah, but how many goals? I'm very concerned about this.
Two. I thought maybe four had been overly ambitious, so I cut back to two, but I am open to other things you'd like me to add to it.
No, I just wanna make sure you didn't overload it.
What?
These are two good ones because these are big.
Yeah, they're very big. The building evaluation will be the one I have. Yeah, I'm concerned about the strategic plan, but due to the age of some of the things here, I'm really, and you referenced that in your budget narrative too, that we need to know how some of these things.
We and Jackie do a fantastic job of maintaining everything, doing everything in really good shape, but from what we said, it seems like the boiler and the HVAC are getting up there in years.
That's my point, yeah.
And those are big ticket items, so I really.
We need to know.
So hence why I wanted to get back to putting money back into the freezer.
Yes, it's gonna be an issue.
Come on, we're on a close session.
Yeah, he texted me, but I found my phone on silence.
Okay, so.
You really are having a bad day. I am.
Three, but because these are hefty, two is great.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I agree. And they're very. Pardon to the success of the library.
That's right. Okay, thank you for that.
True.
All right, I'm entertaining a.
I move that we adjourn the May meeting of the Mark the Public Library District. It's April.
Okay, we seconded Sandy.
Second.
Okay, just get them. And a voice vote. Uh.
I.
I. I. Any of hopes?
We are adjourned. Very well done. Congratulations.
Okay, that was at eight oh eight.
Thank you all.
Okay.